Tonight, we're going to hear from the Boys and Girls Club about their planned structure and environment here near our community center. So I will turn it over to you all if you're up for that now.
Excellent. Well, thank you. My name is Dustin Nichols. I'm a volunteer board member and facilities chair with Boys and Girls Club of J.C. County. And I want to say thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees, for allowing us time to come for you during a work session. So that we can seek your informal approval, get your head nod, your direction to move forward with our site plan. It's currently proposed regarding a specific ask related to it, which is the extension of the ground lease lots northern boundary by five feet to the north. We were at a point in the planning process where we need to have some assurance that the formal approval of this ask could be granted at a future point in time where we need this input before we take up any more talent of the planning department or invest any more time or resources on our end to finalize the plans. I plan to keep this presentation under 15 minutes before turning it back over to town staff, trustees, or comments and questions regarding the presentation. So with that, I thank you for supporting the Boys and Girls Club, for supporting Great Futures in Buena Vista as we embark to provide a new home for our kids and community members. So we can move to the agenda slide. On this slide, we're going to explain the current status of the project, kind of how we got here and what we're here asking. We're going to present some images that speak to that ask and talk briefly about each image. Then we're going to discuss benefits mitigate the ask or any trade offs that would be related to our ask. And then finally, we will conclude and allow time for any questions and answers that are needed. So we can move to this next slide. This one here, yeah. So to explain the current status and how we got there, this is a nice appropriate slide. It has our facility overlaid on the town campus, shows the bicycle corridors that run adjacent and just kind of gives you a good idea of where we're talking about and what we're talking about. And so in the beginning, we worked with town administration to find the best location. And as part of that process, we realized an opportunity to create a space that would not only support the mission of the Boys and Girls Club, but also the Town Rec Department. The core BV Facilities team, known as the BV Task Force to the Board, meets weekly ever since. Scott Archel came up with our BV Task Force name, and I've grown quite fond of it because it's volunteers who serve diligently and dedicated on that committee. We entered into a LOI with town to enter into a 99 year ground lease on a very desirable lot in the town campus as shown there and laid out in the town's master plan. Afterwards, we continued to work on the facilities conceptual plan that started long before with children's ideas, then on to sharing and input sessions with community members and donors, further refining with town rec department and town planning department. We then came back to town asking for approval of the ground lease, and it was unanimously approved and signed shortly thereafter. So thank you for that. Since that time, we hired the Phase Two Architectural Design Team that is and will carry the refinement of the conceptual plans through to construction documents, buildable plans, and construction oversight, along with Abe Hackman. We've also engaged the design team with Town Rec on several occasions to hear from them and design a gym facility that supports Town Rec programming needs. We have now arrived at what we believe is the best site plan for a facility that will serve children, youth development, working families, the community at large, and importantly, the partnership between the Boys and Girls Club and Town Rec is laid out in our ground lease. Now come before you, the trustees, that are trustees that are intentional about their service and their role as representatives of taxpayers of Buena Vista with a specific ask, which is the extension of the ground lease lots northern boundary, five feet to the north, and is what we believe is a small ask with big benefits for those taxpayers that you represent. As you will see in the slides, this ask of five feet will encroach on the alleyway, and we acknowledge that there are trade offs with this ask. However, we believe the benefits outweigh any loss of tax value that may result on the lot to the north, that this is indeed a small ask and give by town with big results and benefits for the taxpayers of Buena Vista. So we kind of roll through the slides and we'll just talk briefly about each one before moving on to benefits. This here, this, these are some really nice photo realistic renditions that were provided to us by a current Phase Two Architect Team. It does a really good job of accurately depicting the massing and what you would see if you were to stand at any one of these angles looking at the subject. On the next slide, this was really kind of spoken to a moment ago. Town campus is defined in the town as planned, and we have overlaid our facility down rec on top of that. And as you can see, it fits rather tightly on there and allows for a very open corridor and walkability and green space and really kind of preserves the nature of that design and that that site plan is laid out in town campus. We can move on to the next slide. These were some elevations that were provided for you to to get a really good understanding of what you would be seeing in a very detailed way if you were standing, you know, looking at the building from the north or the west or the south or the east. And then moving on to our next slide. Really proud of this slide. Our team, architectural team, put this together for us. It's a nice 3D render modeling of the interior of the gym. Very important aspect of this space and what really brings us here today. It's a nice render where you can just see yourself there standing, looking over the gymnasium and, you know, imagine people walking around the track, yourself, children perhaps watching a game. It's just a place where a lot of community can occur, and we're really excited about it happening. We can move on to the next slide. This slide here is, really speaks to the courts and the gym and highlights each of the different courts that were planned out with Town Rec. You can see the side by side basketball courts that run north to south. You can see the volleyball courts underneath them that run north to south. There's two there. You can also see the high school regulation size court for basketball and as well as regulation size volleyball court there as well. And so this, if you look to the, on the north of the top of that slide, you can really see that five feet that we need. And you can also kind of see by looking at the gymnasium how it's really integral that we get that extra five feet to allow appropriate runoff from the court activities to also allow some seating around the courts. I don't know if anybody's has child and been a part of a BV rec program for basketball and we're currently over in the the Guinness Building, but we view it from the cafeteria stage. And if you don't get there at the right time and get one of the, you know, 12 seats up front, you can't really see what's going on, but you're there and your kids know it, so it's good. But this will allow an opportunity for some viewing at court level. We can move on to the next slide. This next slide really highlights the walking track where you could also view the court activities from above. This aspect of the design was very important and to our donors and to our community members and pretty much everyone who's thought about this project. There's a lot of excitement around a walking track for a lot of reasons that are pretty obvious where we live, and I'll touch on them more as we move forward. So lastly, I will move on to the benefits because again, we are here asking for kind of a head nod that we can continue with this site plan. And there are some trade offs that need to be considered as part of this, specifically that lot to the north are encroaching on the alleyway, how that might affect the town thereof, that lot, any tax considerations, those sorts of things. So to speak to that, I would just want to kind of put out the benefits that can help support your approval of this ask. So first and foremost, this supports working families and working families in Buena Vista need all the support they can get. It provides space for youth development and play and mental wellness. It helps address a lack of suitable space for current and future programming of our rec department. And it does the same for Buena Vista Boys and Girls Club as well. It provides a space and a place for community to occur, for connections to be made, for values to be shared and displayed. It provides a place for exercise indoors during our more cold and blustery winter season. An indoor walking and running track that is safe and free of ice, snow, rain, and motor vehicles and their exhaust. It can help BV rec increase earned income through enhanced programming. It can help Boys and Girls Club do the same. The site plan will result in an outdoor playground, an outdoor playground that is open and free to the public. We believe this site plan is reflective of the nature and character of the town of Buena Vista and that it allows for green space and walkability, preserving the core of the town campus block. It does not materially with muting the light of the benefits detract from town's options with a lot to the north. It still allows space for an alley if desired by town with what we believe is a small loss in any development or tax value opportunity to the lot to the north. We believe that this site plan is a desirable fit for the town campus as shown on the town's master plan and campus overlay shown earlier, that it allows for the heart of the block to remain open and green for pedestrians, children, community members, visitors, and town staff working in the proximate buildings within the block. We believe that the subject site plan only enhances the desirability of any use in any mixed use development that might occur on the north lot to the subject. In the end, this is a small ask with big benefits that accrue to our community members' health and wellness and those connections within. So in closing, we are here before you for your informal approval that we can continue on this journey with the planning department and Town Rec to bring the best facility we can for our Boys and Girls Club and Town Rec members to march by having its northern boundary extended to the north by five feet. We believe you can provide this informal approval with confidence that you are doing what is in the best interest of the people and place that are together, Buena Vista. So with that, I thank you again for this time. And I turn it over to town staff for comments or questions, or yourself for questions and answers.
Here, we do have Joseph on Zoom, and I know he was going to provide some comments.
Joseph?
Under control.
He's really quiet.
Yeah, kind of quiet.
Can you hear me okay now? Okay, I will speak up. Apologies, I'm not there with you in person. Had a bit of a medical hiccup yesterday, so I'm taking it slow. Thank you, Dustin, for your excellent presentation, and it's been an absolute joy to work with the Boys and Girls Club so far on this incredible project. My brief staff report for you is on pages four through six of your packet. And really, I just seek to kind of provide a little bit of context and make sure that you all understand the request before you is really direction. Obviously, in a work session, we're not seeking a formal vote, but we are seeking a head nod and sort of direction forward on on this question of supporting the facility size as presented and therefore working to accommodate that and evaluate the decisions that will need to be evaluated, should that be the case moving forward or or not. And then alternatively, working with the Boys and Girls Club on fitting the facility within the current lot. So you know that Lot 33, which is shown on page five, I believe, of your packets, was created last year specifically for this facility and for the ground lease that underpins it. That ground lease was approved by you all and is currently in force. Page six really just tries to outline a couple of considerations for you. I'm happy to dive deeper into those if you have specific questions. I don't want to take up too much time on on presentation. But really, the next steps identified at the, at the end of my report hopefully give you an indication of where we might go depending on the direction that we hear from you all. I think you've heard from Dustin some incredible benefits to the community by moving forward. The facility is proposed. And I do think there's some considerations that you all need to take into account about the impacts of the larger block and how this decision here might end up impacting those those future uses and values. So really, I'm just here to to answer any questions, happy to dive deeper into anything you might want. Thank you all very much.
Trustees, questions for Joseph or Dustin? I have a question. Joseph or Dustin, has anyone evaluated the the effect on the value of these lots for taking away the the alley behind them?
So it's a great question, Mayor. I have not run any formal nor talked with any appraisers or realtors about the formal impact on value. And honestly, I think should the direction from you all be to kind of proceed with the proposed facility size, that would be one of the pieces that we're trying to understand. And I say that primarily because as we work to replat the block, and really it is replating the entire block, which is to do anyways, we would be asking questions about whether we should keep the alley as a right of way at all or whether we put in place various easements on those lots for access and utilities and we vacate the alley. We could also shift the alley northward, maintaining that 20 foot width and taking that five feet out of those those lots to the north. I think the the primary impact on value will end up being determined by the flexibility those lots have to be able to access the backside of their lots. We do not allow vehicular access off of Main Street, but we do allow for payment of a fee in lieu for parking requirements for mixed use Main Street Zone District. So I think we have a variety of different options before us to explore. Should we be moving forward with with this kind of direction? And you all would be able to weigh in on those both through the replat process, which would involve vacation rights of way potentially and movements of right of way, rights of way, but also as we discuss, potential future development on town campus and really thinking about that as a as a whole block and holistic context.
In terms of like if the alleyway was, I guess, removed, does, I don't know if Chief Bertram or anybody, in terms of like fire trucks or anything like, granted, there's roads all around that block, so you could access something in the, there was an issue, but just curious if he was asked if his thoughts on this or if that would impact anything if it was removed or if it was changed, they'd still be able to get through, but I'm sure it needs to be large enough for something like that, but thoughts and.
Yeah. So again, because we haven't, we haven't necessarily gone down the road of trying to propose a different plat yet. We have not engaged the fire department. I will say that should we look at moving or vacating that alley, especially in the case of vacation, we would be implementing and recording access, fire, and utility easements across where the alley is today or slightly to the north of that for the benefit of not only town facilities, but also for those four lots. And then we would need to think critically about especially the inner lots, lots three and four, how they would achieve any required fire aerial apparatus access or fire apparatus access. Given the small number of linear feet we're talking about, I'm pretty confident we'd be able to figure those challenges out. But those are additional considerations.
Thanks, Joseph.
Is it acceptable to have a 15?
We have considered that with our specific lot. And if I could invite Chris, who's our site planner engineer. Chris, you are on the call.
Is this, yes?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Can you hear me? Okay, great, great. Again, I'm Chris Lieber with NES, and our role is to kind of assist Boys and Girls with the upcoming entitlement process, but site planning as well. And one of the things that we looked at right away was trying to get an understanding of how fire apparatus could still access and and serve, serve the site. And absolutely, we anticipate that with a formal submittal upcoming, that fire would do a full, a full review. The good news is, fire has, would have great access from the existing road networks on really two sides. And then extending the the parking lot kind of to the full depth up to that, the proposed kind of northern boundary provides that important fire access both for the the community center as well as Boys and Boys and Girls. I do think it is strategic to keep the option of an alley, not just for fire, but future utility corridor, as I think Joseph had had alluded to. And the parking, the end of the parking could could be converted again to that, to that future access. So I guess in summary, keeping all the options really still still on the table, it would require that perhaps alleyway to shift, you know, five feet further north, but also just recognizing there, there's good access for fire service just with the access on three sides. And of course, one of the things we look at is hose length and, you know, the length of that run to be able to access the the north side. So that was our initial look and just to make sure that those those pieces are in place.
I just wanted to hear from our rec team, just what the, if you could be a little more specific about the programming impacts of one direction or the other on this?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll start it off and then Shane will help me fill in the blanks. So we're excited about having a possible gym that would service the needs of our, our existing programs. But what's really important to us, if this facility were to be built, is to have lateral courts, which means you could have two basketball games going on at a time or two volleyball games to help support our youth and adult programs. If the gym's a little bit smaller, it wouldn't accommodate that. So that's kind of the key that we're looking for. So right now, we have a great relationship with BV Schools and DPCA, but our access to those gyms for programming is only based off of our yearly relationships, which are good and strong, but limited in terms of like long term access as our schools are growing and more popular. We also are, you know, really excited to help serve some of our populations that don't have a lot of outlets, like our senior population and the toddlers in Buena Vista and a little bit of J.C. County to have indoor play access. So the the walking track around the gym is really important for us to see that happen and just to have all this extra space indoors in close proximity to our existing offices. Yeah, so we, we would definitely utilize it all the time, and it would be a nice addition to our portfolio for space.
Yeah, we have a number of programs that were limited in what we're able to offer and, you know, particularly our youth basketball is one for sure that that, you know, we have practice once a week for each, each team, each kid. They they practice once a week, but in most of our other sports, it's common called two practices. But simply, there's just not enough gym space in town. But and like Dustin alluded to with, you know, playing games at Avery Parsons, we're able to get two games going sideways there, but, you know, it's very limited on what actually anybody who's not, you know, on the floor in the game is able to see. So this would provide us a great facility to use for the, for those activities. You know, our adult indoor soccer league, we've had to cap the number of teams because we haven't had another spot to play. So you know, opportunities like that and new opportunities as well would certainly be available with this facility. And the current design of the facility is very similar to the size of DPCA or the White Gym, the new gym of Buena Vista High School, which, you know, they're, you know, not full stop, not full sized side courts, you know, it's not as big as the Red Gym, but they're plenty sufficient for what we like to offer and what we typically offer. And like Earl said, unfortunately, if you get, you know, even just a little bit smaller, it starts to limit the things we're able to do. So that is the the big benefit for us.
Okay, and do we, it sounds like we're still working out or it'll take some time to work out just how much community access there will be in addition to what the programming is from the Boys and Girls Club. Do we, I know we pay, it looks like, I've seen that we pay Garrett Patterson. Will we pay here or is our land donation cover some of that or is all of that being worked out?
In the process of being worked out, we've had initial meetings with Dustin and Brian about kind of the operations. And, you know, we'd certainly have a facility use agreement that, you know, both parties would agree to before. You'll, you'll go for, you know, too far ahead in the process. But I think, you know, both sides were open to sharing the space and, you know, working together to make it work for both of us. Probably some some shared operational costs, but probably, you know, like for DPCA, we play, pay like a flat fee per hour, probably not, not something along those lines, but maybe, you know, yeah, shared maintenance costs, custodian, things like that. We haven't gotten that far into the details, but that would likely be laid out in that facility use agreement.
Okay. And the big general concept is that BV rec and our community gets access during non Boys and Girls Club programming hours. It's usually AM to about 3:00 PM and then again 7:00 PM on or just depending if we have a special event, you know, we can work out a schedule with Boys and Girls Club to start there. We'd have access to gym space when they're not having their programs going on, which is almost every day. Good access early on.
And Saturday and Sunday.
Okay, thank you. I feel really quick. Okay, and it's not specific to the five foot, but just because I can't see, but is there an elevator in the?
Yes, ma'am. There is an elevator. It's kind of there north of the reception desk on, by the stairwell.
So I was thinking.
It's kind of small and hard to see on the screen, but.
Yes, that's where I was like, I can't tell, but I just wanted to check in because I think that is really nice, right? And I assume people on a wheelchair could go up there, somebody who push, they want, you know, just more uses. And so anyhow, doesn't necessarily pertain, but that thing is really important. So thank you.
Does this just not fit if you were to push it five feet south rather than five feet north?
We have kind of explored that option with town planning, planning department, and it kind of comes down to a safety and parking issue. So we have the number of parking spaces that are required by town code with this plan. And we also allow for safe access to those parked vehicles and getting in and out of them, that sort of matter. However, we need a space where, you know, a bus could drop off kids or people or that sort of thing, where parents can do pickup. And so given the limitations of the lot size, it's very difficult to create. Um, and so given the limitations of the lot size, uh, it's very difficult to create a turnaround access within the confines of the parking lot and keep that all safe. And so what this site plan proposes is that there's a, an on-street pole, a carve out and that we would preserve the, uh, is it six feet or eight feet walking path, whatever that's safe route to school. So it is, it would preserve that width, but we would be proposing to move that over closer to the building and then having a place where you can pull up a car and kids get off in or out safely and then travel on down. So.
Yeah, thank you. Joseph, do I understand correctly that if we support this tonight, there are still some things that have to be worked out to make sure all of the things that are, I mean, are being taken away from the north end of the alley or the the four blocks or whatever and the fire trucks and all those issues that were raised still need to be sort of worked out or?
Yeah, um, I think that's, that's fair to say. There's, there's sort of two. Well, there's a variety of different next steps in that, in that pathway forward. The the first would be to to really work up a full understanding of the implications of either shifting that alley and keeping that 20 foot right of way or partially vacate, partially or fully vacating that alley. That would be done in concert with our referral agencies. So, you know, everyone from Buena Vista Sanitation to Fire District. As well as working with other potential user groups of those four lots. You know, our, our, our conceptual, uh, master plan for this block kind of anticipates the idea of selling those lots for commercial development or mixed use development. And we would probably want to engage with a few of those potential developers or buyers to understand how they might perceive different trade offs in what we do. Since there's a variety of different research-based topics or or avenues to explore. And then we would, we would end up representing those in the form of a new plat for the entire block, which needs to be done anyway. Um, and that plat would be what what ends up coming back before you for formal consideration. And that would both enlarge in lot 33 for the Boys and Girls Club. And it would also either shift the alley or propose vacating it and kind of finalizing the the rest of the block from a lot and plat perspective.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have any questions?
No, never. I mean, I think this the benefits outweigh the negatives on the five feet and particularly if the main impact is going to be parking, because we're also considering you know, parking lot and expanded parking kind of across Catty Corner. You know, I think, and again, there's something questions still may be left to be answered in terms of what kind of impact this will have on those four lots. But I also can't imagine we'd be able to sell those four lots at a, at a rate and amount that, you know, exceeds the benefit of actually having a program and being able to grow with the community. So makes sense to me.
Thank you. So you'd be favorably disposed towards this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same.
Devin, what questions do you have?
I have any questions? I feel the same.
Okay.
Thank you, screen.
Agreed. Okay. Yeah. Well, it sounds like we're pretty much in support of this.
Thank you all.
Further, further analysis.
Analysis, yes.
I know Swisher's on too, if you wanted to.
Oh, Cindy, sorry. Do you want to, uh, ask any questions? Trustees.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
The only question that I had is five feet isn't very much, and I think it's for a very good cause. But does that five feet come behind the police station? Will it interfere with town hall plans moves?
Joseph, do you have any comments there?
Yeah, I mean, the facility itself does not, uh, directly back up to the current police department or or future town hall east. I think there's, it's hard to say that that five feet will meaningfully restrict our options when we look at the expansion of town hall east. I think the biggest implications really do come down to vehicular access and utility access. Not, not even necessarily parking. I think parking can be solved for in a variety of different ways, but vehicular access and utility access. So I think it will have implications. And five feet is five feet, but I I think those those challenges can probably be circumvented with with creative design.
Thank you. I do support it.
Thank you, trustees. Swisher? Okay. Do we have any other things to discuss here?
From us.
Great. You guys are good?
Yeah, good. How are you?
Thank you.
You again. Thanks, staff. Thanks, Joseph.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, trustees.
Thank you.
Raising some money, right?
Good to see you all.
Okay, so we have a little break here. Everybody wants to?
My nap, yeah, nap, put her on the block.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go see if there's someplace that has food. All right. See you.
I mean, I don't have enough time to figure out what I want.
All of us pretty fast.